Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the November 21st, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. And as always, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of November 9th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 9th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And finally, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 13th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, moving along to the first selectments updates, just a short one, as we recover from the election and look forward to a new term. We will be having a swearing-in on December 1st at the high school. All are invited. There'll be food there, delivered by the Khaas Ghaber, and then we will be heading thereafter, since we're, there's lots of, there'll be lots to drink there, but there's no alcohol at the school. So we're going to go over to the Khaas Ghaber for those who want to have a beer after that. So we're looking forward to that later today, the Thanksgiving event. I see Joe here, former Boys Club Boy of the Year for the Boys and Girls Clubs Thanksgiving annual event. On Sunday, we're going to be doing the Albanian Flag Raising, which is always a fun event here. They put a lot into it. Just a couple, also, the tree lighting is on December 1st at 4:00. I see Joe there again reminded me of that. The Byram Neighborhood Tree Lighting will be December 2nd at 4:00 p.m. On December 6th, the Connecticut Mirror is going to have an event at the Historical Society. And my old classmate and colleague in the legislature, Beth Bai, who runs the Early Childhood Department up in Hartford, will be a guest speaker, so it'd be good to see Beth there. And what else? Just a couple things going forward. We're going to be looking at the committees going forward for the new term. Some of them are going to be, hopefully, reinvigorating, you know, putting some new energy and blood into some of them. I think it's, that's always a good thing to do. And we'll be going forward, going public with some of that. Lots of people have reached out, wanted to serve on certain committees, so, and also on the boards, committees, and commissions that we always interview for. People for will also have some more people coming. So the bench just got a little bit bigger, which we're happy about. And also, I reached out to Senator Fazio about the FOI requests, something that I had looked at when I was in the legislature. Lots of people are now becoming aware because of the email that went out. Lots were aware, but many were not. So some are surprised to know that what the state law compels us to do, and that Connecticut actually has a very, much more liberal law than most states. So we're going to look at other states and see if we can model some legislation after that, just to do a little bit of restriction on that, and maybe put some guardrails on it. So this FOI, which is a tool that I think we all respect and are grateful for, but to make sure it's not abused and weaponized, and it has been. And we saw that this last fall, sadly. It was used for political purposes, and I was a recipient for about four months of a weekly one, which they got from my weekly e-blast. So we don't mind people doing it, but when it's used for things like that, you know, it just, I think it perverts the whole purpose of it. So we'll see what we can do. We're going to look at other states, and hopefully it'll be a bipartisan effort on that. So referred from lots of people who support the law, but also are concerned that in this day and age, all it takes is four pieces of information to steal your identity. And that was the case when I was in the legislature, but now with AI and everything else, it's, I think it's, the time is here to take another look at the Connecticut law. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thanks, Fred. So just first, since we'll be celebrating Thanksgiving on Thursday, I just want to say how grateful I am, first, to be reelected, but I'm also grateful and thankful for all of our town employees who serve our wonderful community of 64,000-some-odd residents. You men and women are top-notch and really help bring the services to our community that everyone appreciates and enjoys while they live here or work here, or go to school, or, you know, I keep saying my favorite word, "stay." And then also thank you to all of our volunteers who serve on our boards, commissions, and committees. The talent and skills are, you know, beyond measure, and what your contribution to the community is, is so much appreciated. So one of the committees that I am liaisoned to is the Central Middle School Building Committee. We just had our meeting this morning, and a topic keeps returning to the building committee about using geothermal instead of more traditional methods of heating and cooling the building. The building committee had already opined on that decision, and we recently all got an email from the Board of Education, who took a sense of the meeting resolution to not put geothermal on Central. My advice to the building committee, because we did have some experts come in, we have other committees that are coming in to speak to our committee, we have state legislators who think that they should be running things on the committees, is this is, you know, a broader topic that I believe, you know, needs broader input and not necessarily, you know, just solo on the Central Middle School Building Committee. So that was my recommendation, and perhaps there's a way that, you know, we can move forward. What keeps getting brought up is misinformation, not the right information, need more information, the financial aspects of it, and just like all the misinformation that came out during the election season, I think we owe it to our community to come together, together, come together, together. I didn't mean to say two words. If there was spell check, it would be read underlined, to come together and really have a robust discussion and not do it in silos. So hopefully, that's going to occur. And that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. We don't have it on our agenda, but I just want to socialize it, that we are only obligated to meet once a month. And one of our meetings in December is the 28th. I think I'm going to be the only one in town that week, so we are going to not meet on the 28th, but that's going to be voted on in our next meeting.
Thank you. You know, we could always circle back in if there's something comes up. Thank you, Lauren. Janet, good morning.
Good morning. And so I would like to share my colleagues' feeling of gratitude. You said it very well. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and yes, we are very, very fortunate as a community to have all of our town staff and our volunteers. It makes, it makes this job just such a pleasure. And I do look forward to our swearing-in. Congratulations again, Fred and Lauren. And similarly, I serve on the Old Greenwich School Building Committee, so I have an update. But before I get to that, I just want to respond to Laura's comments. I agree that I think as a way to move forward, that the question of geothermal and net zero generally has kept coming up. I know that both, there is an interest on the part of the Energy Management Advisory Committee, as well as the Sustainability Committee, to have a public forum or workshop that just talks about, you know, what the facts are. So I would say, stay tuned. Nothing, nothing specific is planned, but I know that those two committees would be very, very happy to help move this topic forward. So with that, my update from the Old Greenwich School Building Committee is that for the past several months, the committee has been conducting extensive due diligence and design work to advance the OGS renovation. We expect to wrap up the design development process in January and receive our next project estimate in February. We expect to complete construction documents this spring. The project start has been delayed until summer 2025, after the BET rejected construction funds in October. After receiving municipal improvement status on October 3rd, we have continued to work towards meeting PNC's criteria for submitting our final site plan. In early December, the building committee will appear before the ARC, that's the Architectural Review Committee, and be prepared to defend the MI status before the RTM. We're thankful for all the great input we've received from DPW staff throughout the project. We have published a number of project updates and fact sheets on our website, and we continue to receive encouraging feedback from the public. We'll be hosting a forum on student and staff safety and phasing after Thanksgiving. And finally, the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights has approved the renovation design and schedule. The town and school district's next communication with OCR will be when the project is complete and the school is fully compliant with the 2010 ADA standards. That said, we are required to notify OCR if the project design has materially changed or if construction funding is not provided in the upcoming 2024, 25 budget. And that's from the Chair of the OGS Building Committee.
Okay, thank you. Going on to old business, we have a request for an amendment to the parking permit Schedule X-A. I'm not even going to attempt that. Deputy Chief Craig Ray is here. Good morning.
Good morning.
I learned from watching you guys last time not to attempt it.
So anyway, for the record, Deputy Chief Craig, Department Director of Public Parking. The only real update I have is that we see no input from the public whatsoever on it, neither on website call or what have you, so we have no input really on that. There is one update, and it's just correcting the graphic that we gave out last week. All it shows is that on the graphic, so you can visualize it, that the actual parking fees on the weekend are actually $40.
It's on. It's on. He said he thought their microphone wasn't on. It's on. So I'm sorry.
So I'm just going to pass that off, I guess, to add to the record.
Sure, thank.
It's not a, it's not a change to anything as written, but just an example.
Thank you.
For you to just note that the Saturday.
Perfect, okay.
To just note that the Saturday fee is actually $40.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. No, I mean, I haven't heard anything, you know, the, prior to that, the only things I heard were positive, but since the first read, nothing.
Now that I'm just looking at the visual, if on, like a Sunday, for example, that there's not enough parking for the ferry in the summertime.
They would just shift over to the day parking.
Okay.
Right? And then obviously, on the weekends, you know, the lots are all currently, our lot counts are still, there's still space for people to use. Saturday and Sunday are not.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
So I just, I just want to say thank you. Similarly, I haven't heard anything, so I think it's very exciting. Hopefully, hopefully this will, you know, bring about the results we're hoping for. But I want to repeat the question I had at the last meeting, which is, when do you, what amount of time do you think is a reasonable amount of time to see if this has the desired effect, so that we can ask you to come back and we can have another discussion to see, you know, is it working the way we want it to? Can we, can we keep?
I just feel as if it's just going to be an option that's out there, right?
Right.
Because, you know, I don't know if, you know, the change that we're looking for is going to be easily quantifiable, because there's just so many factors involved in parking. But so this is, the goal for this, obviously, is not to, you know, change everything 100%. It's just to create some options. So, I mean, I would think no less than six months, we could kind of maybe go back to it, but I'm just not sure what metric we're going to use. So if we get 25 people, if we get five people that take it this year, that doesn't mean that the following year we won't get 25 people. And it's kind of like with the Central Greenwich permit, it was the same kind of thing. We're actually, you know, we have reevaluated the number of permits that we put out there. The first year was only used, but so much, I don't have the exact numbers, but Luanne asked me, she wanted it, but it kind of evolved, right? Now we're at capacity for the Central Greenwich permit, but it didn't happen overnight, it didn't happen in the first year, so.
Totally understood. I just, I look to my colleagues and say, I think, I don't speak for you, but at the same time, I know that we're all mutually interested in keeping the momentum going. So I'd like to see this to be a continuing conversation, you know, not, not something that ends with a vote today.
Yeah, no, I think you're absolutely right. I mean, this, and Deputy Chief Gray is right, it does evolve. So I mean, in six months, if two people do, it doesn't mean it's failing, it's an option. But as we know, in the last three or, three or four years, since, maybe three years since we started doing the, the, using the opt, the option of the municipal lots on the, up on the top of the avenue, we've gotten about 200 people off the avenue. So we know that there's a track record there. Now, this may be a little bit hard, only because it's downhill a little bit, but like, I think Deputy Chief Gray said, I think it's, it's an option that we need to keep out there, but we certainly, you know, can talk in six months and see how that's working. Maybe there's a way to make, if it's, if only one person has signed up, maybe we can do a little bit more on our side.
If it's underutilized, then certainly we would, you know, I'm sorry if I cut you off.
No, no.
You know, so if it's underutilized, you know, we're always looking to, you know, maximize the permits that we have. So, you know, if it's underutilized, you know, we'll put it out there. But if it's underutilized, would we remove it?
No, not, what I was suggesting, actually, is no, just, I just want a continued conversation, not, not necessarily to, you know, hone down on this particular change, but just to say, okay, are we, are we going in the right direction? What more can we do?
Oh, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's just information.
I would just like to be a little bit more formal about it, rather than, you know, just leave it up, leave it up to, you know.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Makes sense. So this way, we're just keeping an eye on it publicly and just showing people that, you know, what our track record's been in the past and how this one may be comparing with the other one. It makes sense to me. Thank you.
So if that's the kind of conversation, maybe we just talk about it at the beginning of each permit cycle.
Oh, that would.
Because we do, we do other permits also, so the Central Greenwich Residential Permit, and all those permits.
Okay.
So probably if that's the kind of conversation you're looking for, is it probably right?
I would.
I can gear up for that.
I would really welcome that, if, if we can all agree on that. I would really welcome that.
It's, it's information that we use, so I think we all agree.
It works for me.
And you've kind of done that anyway, over the last few years.
Email.
So, I mean.
Yeah, but that's the thing, it's an email to us, rather than a public.
No, I realize that, but it's not that it's work, extra work, because you've been doing it, and we're just making it happen at the meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we don't want to, I'm not asking you to do extra work.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Thank you, Luanne. Thank you. We're good. Okay, so we could take a vote on this one?
So I move that we approve the request for amendment to Schedule X-A parking permit.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thanks again. Pretty much appreciate it. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, next up is a discussion of the lease renewal second read for the Greenwich Community Gardens, and we have our Assistant Town Attorney, Amina Ahmed there. Good morning, Amina.
Good morning. This is a second meeting. It's on.
I think it's on, but.
No, just, I think, just tilt it, tilt it, tilt it forward. Good morning, Dan. Senator?
We hear you. I don't, yeah, we hear you. Good morning.
Good morning. This is a second meeting, which was called in the last meeting. Additional senior term, and he first, Representative, regarding his past time, Mr. Morganon.
We haven't heard anything, I haven't heard anything. I don't know if my colleagues have.
Nope.
So, all right. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. That was a quick one. Thank you.
Lauren Raven, I move that we approve the lease renewal with Greenwich Community Gardens, Inc.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you, Amina. Next up is new business, and we only have three items there. And the first one is the presentation and discussion of the proposed parks and recreation fees that time of year for 2024. So we have Dan and Joe here. Good morning.
Good morning. Congratulations on your good questions.
Oh, thank you.
Good to be here. This is our annual fee proposal for 2024. This starts the conversation. So as you can see in your package, there's a proposed change, you're yellow, so it makes you free to kind of cross reference them, there's a lot of pages. When we do this, we have a list of the divisions and specific changes, both the fee increases or adjustments to Dan and I, and we review them, and bring them here for approval. What we're going to be doing after this meeting is that.
Excuse me? That might be dead, can't hear you. You just talk a lot, and then I'll.
Okay, thanks, Sam.
I'll talk as loud as I can.
There you go. There you go.
So, so after this meeting, we'll be placing these fees on our website with contact information. Give the public two weeks. We'd like to come back in for December 14th, P D, for your review, final review and approval. We have to implement them on this January 1st. So our goal would be to take any comments and answer any questions, not only from the public, but also from, but also from the board. If you have a question, please feel free to contact Dan or I. We'd be happy to walk you through it or explain any of your questions about a specific fee. So basically, it's, you know, this is the first read, it's putting it on the table, and we'll be answering questions, and we'll be back on the 14th to, for final decision from the board.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Dan. Nothing really jumps out. It's nothing other than, you know, unusual.
Well, the goal is to look at them every year and do some minor incremental increases, and sometimes we, you know, certain years we focus on certain fees and certain, there are others, but nothing here is, is really going to jump out and have a big effect on you.
And just so people know out there, that I know you always cross-reference it with fees in neighboring towns, just to see that we're in line, and in many cases, we're, we don't even charge as much. So I know, just I want people to know that you, we do cross-reference that.
Yes, we do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No, I was just going to say, yeah, your annual visit, and it just makes, you know, time fly, really. I think this is the first thing.
I only try to do this once a year, you know, so.
I think that it's, this is the first thing we did in 2019, Fred.
Yeah, right off the bat.
It's like, look at this. So like, if I measure my life by, you know, fee schedules for Parks and Rec, it's going by pretty quickly.
Well, if you think about the timing, it wasn't going to come before the election to get a fee increase, so.
I do, I do have one question, just out of curiosity. Once these are in place, what's the general increase to the fee revenue that would occur in a year? Or do you really build that into your, is that more of a, when the budgets come forward question?
Right, that's a, when we, when we, when we, you approve the fees, then we'll go back to the fee schedule and the revenue section of our budget, and then do the, do the rollups. But it'll be, I, just, on an average, over the years that we've done this, it's, it's a little less than 5%.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Well, so we'll see, once it gets up on the website, we'll see if we get any feedback.
It'll be posted this afternoon, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Dan. Thanks so much. Okay, next up is the proposed 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule, and we have Ken Borsec.
Yes.
Propo.
Where my microphone.
Please identify yourself.
As you can see here, we have dates proposed for the next year. All the meetings, except where noted, will be in the meeting room. We have two places that are still TBD, because there are commitments in the Cohen Room for that day, and I just, one thing for the March, we are beginning early voting next year for the Connecticut Presidential Primary, so that will get us out of the meeting room during that week of the 28th. But we, I can get us in the Cohen Room as soon as we approve the schedule for those two, so we shouldn't be orphans for too long on there, but. See if these work for everyone. I think there's already a call to maybe eliminate December 26th from the schedule.
Yes, please.
We will get to that as a pleasure of the board.
Yeah, and I think as we go along, because I know, maybe some of these ones that are to be determined, maybe we could switch it up with a night, because we, we started to do that prior to the pandemic, and then we had to do it once this year. And I think people kind of like the idea of having a night meeting once in a while. Also, I know we tried in 2019, we were looking at this to go off-site, and it, we ran into a lot of problems with, you know, having to pay for, you know, people open up buildings and all that. So if there's any other, you know, we could still amend this going forward, if there is, you know, maybe in the summer or spring, if we wanted to go off-site with proper notice to a place that would not cost an arm and a leg, maybe we can, we can do that, too. With, with the election going on, I didn't, it was my fault, I didn't really pay attention to this, otherwise I would have proposed a couple of them already. But maybe for the March one, we can maybe look for something off-site or something, or maybe at night. So, anyway, just my two cents.
Thank you. And I checked the dates against the Western Connecticut Council of Government meeting, so no conflicts there, and happily, no KIRMA conflicts, so.
And I actually, I'm the one who mentioned, why don't we just eliminate December 26th now? I don't, I don't know that people necessarily want to conduct business the day after a holiday, so.
You'll have to twist my arm. I'm good. If you wanted to make that motion.
So we're not voting on this calendar until our next meeting.
Next meeting.
You can, you certainly can. I mean, it's a first read, you can vote at your pleasure.
Well, give it, well, give us two weeks to look at some more, if, but I, I think you'll, you'll get a second on that. So, yeah, I appreciate that, Ken, and we'll, we'll go over that.
And then next meeting, we'll have to vote to eliminate the December 28th one from this year.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then, again, we'll, as we go along during the year, you know, once things pop up, we could always amend it, so, but this is, this is good for, for now, so I appreciate that. And last, on the new business, is a request.
Peter?
Is a request.
Peter.
For a formation of a Greenwich Watershed Council, and Peter Alexander is here.
You can try with the judge. I'm not here, I'm, I'm, I'm a tech man.
And Pete, thank you for, Peter Alexander's here for this. Thank you for the presentation, and interesting reading about the costs and damages that come with these extreme weather events and how frequent they're, they're becoming. I didn't realize it's, these, these costs is a billion dollars every three weeks. It's a lot of money. I had no idea it would be that much if you broke it down over the year, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, well. Is that it? This is that. Dun, dun, dun.
Okay, Peter, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name's Peter Alexander. I'm a 70-plus-year resident of the town and practicing landscape architect with licenses in Connecticut and New York. And I've been seriously approached by a group that I've worked with before to have you consider what's called a council. Our combined experience is older than the town, add them up, and different from a committee not for doing anything other than, in some cases, warning the local entity that something might be in the offing. I have been. And our town, I think in part because of that, had an incredible series of native settlers here, almost all Muncie-speaking. But one of the things that makes Greenwich a bit unique, as you might be able to see on here, the number of watersheds and subwatersheds. The principal watersheds that I think the town would really benefit from our advice upon really does relate to other places in our world. if you will, for a landscape architect, and that's a device I found online accidentally after the flood in 2010. I was looking to do, how much would it cost to do regular dredging there? And I called a fellow that I work with over on the coast of Rye, and I said, hey, do you remember they filmed what we were doing? I said, yes. Have you heard of YouTube? It was like, and I did, and I went, I went and dredged in YouTube, and this looks so much like Caroline Pond. That's the first thing I saw. And it's all private, not privately owned, and no one wanted it dredged until during green, started to smell. The results were really pretty amazing. It was the beneficial reuse of the dredge yield that makes this so special. The, and it's used in many countries, but it's starting to be in the United States. They're made here now. It's a, you can pump the silt a mile. And I wanted to reiterate that I'm, I'm not here to work, I'm here to give. And I'd like you to consider what I put on your tables as an effort to get you to, you know, put your signatures, okay, even your initials, that you are encouraging me to do this, and I'd be happy to come back. I mean, you can't get in too much trouble. You've already been reelected, right? But it'd be the last thing you do in this administration. But then I can come back with much more detail in the future.
No, thank you so much for, for the thought that went into this and the effort. What I would suggest, because it's intriguing, that maybe you set up a meeting with Beth Evans, and since that's, this is her area of expertise and jurisdiction, and also go over like the proposed members, like three selected licensed professional watershed managers. Who would be picking them? We'd have to talk to, you know, the risk manager involved, just to cross the Ts and dot the Is. But I think having our professionals onboard would be a good step here. So I think, maybe, God bless you, maybe that would be the, the next step is to also present this to Environmental Affairs.
Don't forget Sustainability Committee.
Right, but I, I think I would start with, with Elizabeth Evans first, and then you can bring in sustainability and, and other, you know, water inland, water courses, you know, all of that. But I think this is an intriguing idea, but I think I'd like to get some more information and some buy-in and cooperation with them, rather than us just saying, hey, let's, let's just do it because we like the idea, because there's lots of things here that would have to be ironed out, but it's, it's a good start.
Well, that's, following the Duchess County, New York thing, sometimes you don't want to get the top professionals that are hired by the town, because you're, you want to talk to them with information and how to share it with them. So be happy to coordinate with them, but we're not depending on each other, if you know what I mean.
No, I know, but I think it's, it's just a coordinated effort, because you don't, they, this is their jurisdiction, so you don't want to leave them out. So it'd be nice to have them know what you're doing and maybe give you some advice or some help if you can, and then you could present away after. But I think we, there's lots of things that would have to be ironed out, but it's certainly intriguing.
If it's modeled after another municipality, it'd be interesting to see how they've documented it, how they're structured, what's their relationship to the professionals that are, you know, paid staff. I've said this before, we've got a lot of committees that sort of overlap. Some people have called them special interest groups. I don't know if I would go that far, but we do seem to have some overlapping committees and commissions and boards, some of which are state statute, some of ones are under the jurisdiction of the First Selectmen, some of them, you know, are ones that the Board of Selectmen has put together and, and then endorsed by the RTM. And what I'm starting to think about, and Fred, you mentioned it in your update, as we think about, you know, committees, you know, what is the mission? What's the impact? What's the output? How do we know that, you know, we're being successful? So, you know, that's just something I'm thinking about in general, because we just have a lot of, of these sort of committees, and I'm fresh off the building committee today to see, you know, three or so different committees, you know, with, with something similar that they're trying to grapple with. So, you know, how do we, how do we do it in a way that's, you know, more streamlined and effective? And then maybe also in a way that has more teeth, because right now, I feel like we're peanut buttering a lot of things, but we're not necessarily, you know, making some of the impacts that I think the community desires.
So I would like to have a clearer sense of what the problem is that we're trying to fix with this, before I put my initials next to it. Absolutely, Beth Evans would be the person who has the jurisdiction. The Sustainability Committee does not have any authority, so I would not come to the Sustainability Committee with this. And I'm just going to be direct to say that my bias is that we not create councils and committees and commissions without a very clear mandate about what, what it is that we want that body to do, because otherwise, these bodies take on lives of their own. We already have the Conservation Commission, we already have Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency, we have the Flood Erosion Control Board, we have a very, very capable Department of Public Works, so.
That's my point.
If there's something, if there's something missing that other.
How do you know that?
I'm sorry?
How do you know that?
How do I know what?
That the Department of Public Works is very effective. I mean, we've had some severe flooding, and we can plan for it. So we're here to help. And a lot of, for at least the last 50 years, especially here, the whole intent is to keep the roads safe, especially get an emergency vehicle through. And we have some amazing infrastructure in the south part of town, but up north, we really haven't tried to hold back any of the water that gets to the south part of town too fast. And you can see why, where there's so many watersheds and subwatersheds that we want to go, go over, and we, sure, we definitely want input, especially from Mrs. Evans, who has experience in the state, because as you say, once, so many committees, so many commissions, it can go on forever. And, you know, you have to get audiences with them on timelines and so forth. So this council is ready to give you some ideas. And by encouraging it, it would help me codify it and solidify it, but we don't want to be either a commission or a.
I'm just, I'm just going to be very direct. I am not going to encourage it until you have, you know, the burden of proof is on you that we absolutely need this. I, it's not something I'd be very fast to be initially.
No, I'm not saying fast.
Peter, and I know, and what Lauren said also, you know, look into other municipalities and counties, see what, if there's a blueprint. If you look at these watersheds in Greenwich, it's not very different from the other towns and you going up, whether it's the Huasutonic, the Connecticut, those all go out towards the sound. Same thing is here, and it's, and those towns have the same issues we do. Your flooding is not unique to Greenwich, it's, it's all over the place. It's nothing that DPW could have, could have stopped. And when you, as you know, from being from Pembroke, living in Pembroke, when you get nine inches in nine hours, there's no place for the water to go. When you get nine.
It could be.
Not, no, no town has been able to do that, nine inches in nine hours. When you get nine inches in thirty. When you get nine inches in 36 hours, like we had last month, it was able to absorb it, because there was some time there. So we're working.
It's much more than numbers, it's the physiology.
But the point is, see, we have so many entities in place now, and, and I think just saying that both Public Works, you know, throwing it out there, that maybe they're the reason why we're flooding, that's, that's not true, and you know that.
No, I didn't say those are.
But I'm saying, I just want to clarify that, because we don't want this to be out there, that this is a result to, a reaction to that. That's, that's not the case. So I think if you can, if you can find, if you can find some blueprints and see how they do it, I think that's a good start, because any, you know, any information is good information when it comes to this stuff, so we're, you know, I'm very encouraging of it, the idea of looking into it, but there's so much that has before we, we, you know, sign up in something like this, so we, and you, you've heard the, the thoughts on that. So I think, before you even talk to Beth Evans, maybe just seeing with these other towns, what they've done, doesn't have to be in Connecticut, it could be anywhere, just seeing how they've done it, and maybe it'll help you form an idea when you talk to Beth. Just this way, you could say, you know, this is the intent, here's what they've done, here's their track record, here's, you know, it can't hurt, so.
Oh, no, it won't hurt. It's, it's been old-fashioned in Connecticut for a long time. For instance, I consult with Garfield County in Colorado, which is the headwaters for the Colorado River, and make sure in Los Angeles, they have enough water for tea. And the council out there, I can use as an example of how you can preserve and protect the most precious resource we have.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
This is good, good reading. Okay, next up, public comment, period. Don't see anybody.
One on one.
Yes. BET member Karen Fesley Otis.
I'm not speaking as a BET. I just, just on the last speaker, I, I just would caution you with the term council, because it does have legal connotations that you need to explore before any such entity is considered.
Yeah, lots of questions, so thank you. Thank, spoken by, from, also a lawyer.
Yeah, I, I agree.
For a second time, Peter Alexander, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I agree. This is, I think, the eighth or ninth time I've offered the information, and the thing that's really held it back is a shared immunity, which is what, in part, this does without including another government entity.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you. Going on to appointments and nominations.
Yes, Lauren Raven, I motion that we correct a previous vote for term expirations, that Dennis Yaski's term expiration should be October 31st, 2025, and Elliot Benton's term expiration be, should be October 31st, 2027.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Seeing no other comments or any business before us, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Ken, and thanks, Don, and thanks, everybody, for being here today. And happy Thanksgiving.